Is there any, any representative from Senator Blackburn's office here today? All right, proclamation, proclamation reads whereas is with deep sorrow and heartfelt sympathy, the city of Jackson acknowledges the passion of Jeff Parish, dedicated and esteemed member of the office of Senator Marshall Blackburn. Whereas Jeff serves Senator Marshall Blackburn in the city of Jackson with unwavering commitment, professionalism, and a passion for public service. Whereas Jeff demonstrated exceptional dedication to the well-being of Jackson's residents, working tirelessly to addresses, address concerns, provide assistance, and uphold the principles of democracy. Whereas Jeff is known for his kindness, intellect, empathy, ability to solve complex issues, and exemplary work ethic, earning the respect and admiration of colleagues, constituents, and fellow public servants alike. Whereas the loss of Jeff leaves a void that cannot easily be filled. His contributions to the betterment of the city of Jackson will be remembered with gratitude and appreciation. Whereas the thoughts and prayers of Jackson's citizens, as well as a mayor and the city council of Jackson, Tennessee, are with Senator Blackburn, Jeff's family, friends, and colleagues during this difficult time. Now therefore I Scott Conger, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim March fifth, two thousand twenty-four, is Jeff Parish's day. A special note about Jeff Parish, he is instrumental for us in getting our TSA back at McKellar Sykes Airport, so he will be deeply missed on a personal level and also a professional level from Senator Blackburn's office. Next proclamation is procurement month. Do we have our procurement staff come up here? And the proclamation reads whereas the public procurement function supports the multitude of services provided by governmental agencies, including the city of Jackson, and contributes toward the efficiency and effectiveness of the city. Whereas the public procurement function focuses on the three pillars of public trust, public service, and justice, when in turn serve as basis for the six values of accountability, impartiality, ethics, professionalism, service, and transparency. Whereas the procurement function for the city of Jackson is a team effort whereby success depends upon the efforts and cooperation of the city's elected and appointed officials, departments, purchasing staff, and the community of suppliers, service providers, and contractors that seek to do business with the city. And whereas the Institute of Public Procurement and other professional purchasing associations through the world engage in special efforts during the month of March each year to inform the public about the importance of the role played by the public purchasing profession in business, industry, and government. Now therefore I Scott Conger, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim March two thousand twenty-four as procurement month.
Thank you Mayor Conger for recognizing March as public procurement month. I'd like to acknowledge my purchasing team, Jamela Hill and Montreal Lawrence for all their hard work and dedication to our department's success.
All right, next up we'll have Jackson Downtown Development Corporation's annual report summary.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you all for allowing me to have a few moments to share about our annual report. You should have received this in your pocket. I can also... There we go. Show it here if needed. I want to have a special thanks, um, thanks. Sorry, it's okay, it's not. Well, I'll continue. Special thanks to the city for your contribution to J D D C. Without that, we would not be able to do the work that we're doing, and we appreciate your commitment to downtown as a whole. And not only for the financial contribution from the city, but also individual departments and staff. Every time we've had a project to do or needed assistance and support, those individual departments and staff have just risen to the occasion and been such a support for J D D C, whether it was our crosswalk art installation and the street department prep to the street, or the sidewalk crew that's come through and pressure washed everything downtown to make it look wonderful. To the planning office, every time we have, I know I bug stand a lot, from Austin Brown to pulling vacancy data for us for this report, just a number of things. The mayor's office comes in clutch many times for J D D C, and so I just can't thank you all enough because we wouldn't be able to do this work without your support. As part of our requirements to maintain our Tennessee and, and national Main Street accreditation, we are required to submit an annual report that highlights our work, that tracks reinvestment statistics, and then we submit work plans for the year ahead that align with our four-point Main Street approach, which is organization, economic vitality, promotion, and design. And so I'm just going to quickly highlight some of the things that we accomplished in two thousand twenty-three to let you know what we've been up to. On that first page, you can see our Board of Directors and Design Committee, and it's something we have worked to, to better structure our board and our new partnership with the co-leadership as well. We've worked to diversify our board through our design committee, our Board of Directors, and volunteers, and we'll continue to do that as we grow. We really value those ongoing partnerships with the city, the chamber, and community organizations, and it would really because communications staff and, and leadership has been huge in our success, and that will be demonstrated in our impact results with promotion especially, and so we're grateful for that. This is just a snapshot of some of those reinvestment statistics that we had to report to the state, and so I just wanted to highlight a few of those there. It's exciting growth for downtown. We've had twenty-three new businesses with about one hundred and fifty-six new jobs associated with those. We've had, we've seen over twenty-seven building rehabilitation projects, six new housing and construction projects in our district. And for those that don't know, that map up there kind of shows the boundaries, but we're talking for J D D C's boundaries, that's Dedrick Royal where meets Highland, and then on the west side where Airways meets Johnson and Main Street. So those are our boundaries that we're capturing this data from, and we had over almost twelve million in public and private investment in downtown, and so that just speaks to the work that's being done and the people that are investing in downtown, and we're so grateful for that. We saw a decrease in our ground floor vacancy rate, which is, is wonderful, and like I said, planning offices continuing to track that. What we're seeing is folks are, are rehabilitating buildings and actively listing them to get folks and tenants in the, in these buildings. There's still a handful that we will be following up with and continuing to work on to make sure we're, we're getting folks in these buildings and not just sitting there vacant, but we'll continue that work, and we're seeing progress there. I highlighted the arts district numbers. I pulled for, from the A E P six study that the Arts Council did because I just think this is something we can continue to celebrate downtown. A large part of those dollars that are spent on arts and culture and event participation happens right here in downtown. In the future, we're going to work with Visit Jackson to better capture our event attendance at our major venues so that we can better kind of capture that for this report. As far as economic vitality, we also received over a hundred thousand in grant opportunities, some of that work you're seeing right now on Main Street, and that is from our downtown facade improvement grant that we got from the state. We'll wrap that up in the next month, and we're excited that that'll impact five buildings and five businesses, and then it also included that crosswalk art, and there's going to be some beautification along with that and some outdoor seating at two of those locations to come, so that's exciting. We received an arts grant to complement that, and then the Love Your Black Neighborhood Grant, which supports our yoga in the park program that we started at the end of two thousand twenty-three. We continued our, those economic-driven programs that you'll see there, the Walkability Campaign, Food Truck Friday, Lavender Trail, Holiday Passport Program, our Downtown in December, and then we'll continue our yoga in the park through this year as well. And so we'll continue to focus on programs that drive economic activity and really champion other organizations and businesses who are planning events downtown and just be a support for them, and that stuff is happening organically, and we're, we're seeing that all the time. You can see that in our numbers there in that little chart. We promoted over two hundred and fifty events that happen downtown. We promote over a hundred and twenty businesses on our website and social media, and you can see the numbers from our website, Facebook and Instagram impact there, and I just think that speaks to the importance of promotion and to, you know, really show that downtown is, is growing and thriving and a wonderful place to be, and we'll, we will continue to focus a lot of our efforts there. See, we continued to support small businesses through our business roundtables. We average about twenty businesses in that advisory council, and we really appreciate the city's support there. They are always present, and different departments have continued to show up in those spaces to really hear from business owners, and, and I think that's really been a great tool to advocate for them and for them to be heard. The local continues to be a catalyst for growth downtown. We have had since its opening, twelve tenants, and seven of those have graduated into larger space, space downtown, so that model really is working. And moving into two thousand twenty-four, it is our goal to kind of have a next iteration of the local that supports another entity of small business, so we will continue those efforts. A few other highlights to make for the upcoming year, we're, we're really grateful for L R K and the city's commitment to, to focus on downtown for design guidelines, and we're excited to see those final drafts and see how we can work as an organization to help put those plans into action, and so we're excited about that. We will wrap up this improvement grant and apply for another round of facade improvements through the state, and we'll focus those efforts on Royal. We really feel like that corridor needs our attention, and so we'll be working on facade improvements there and applying for another placemakers grant for, for another type incubator space. We will continue to partner with our Jackson Home and Public Art over the next two years to continue to develop this arts district, and we will continue to diversify our funding through grants and sponsorships. We know that that's an area we really need to just be more sustainable long-term, and so we're actually about to announce a giving campaign. I think it'll actually be released today, so we'll be sharing more about that in the months ahead, but that's just a quick recap. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I do, I have, I have three.
Sure.
The, give me the boundaries again. On the east, the boundary, did you say that's Royal Street?
It is Royal, yes, sir.
And what, south is what?
Where Royal meets Highland at the...
Down by the fire department place?
Well, down by, past Jackson Station, past the train depot.
Yeah.
Right there.
Okay, I got you. Number two, the board directors, how often does the board change?
They're one-year terms, three-year terms, one-year terms for their officers, for the officers, but three-year terms, yes, sir.
Okay, and the third one, which I think is a very good thing, I've been downtown at night, and I hear music playing, and I try to find out where that music's coming from. Where is it coming from?
It's coming from here. It's, it's the control centers in City Hall. We were actually having issues with it playing late at night and not sticking to the schedule, so we had to turn it off and revamp it, and Brian's been helping us, but the, we control the music, and there's several speakers in kind of the core of downtown, but were you hearing it really late at night, like two AM?
No, 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 it was, it was, it was, I'm not, I can assure you, I'm not out there late at night.
Well, we were getting complaints about that.
No, it was decent time, and I liked the idea of the concept of it. It was a nice thing, and I want to compliment you on that.
Well, thank you.
At one time we had wifi, free wifi, do we still have that?
We do, we do, J A provides that, yeah, we do.
You had a great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Beth Ann?
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
All right, move on to invitations for public comment, and we have several, so we will start out, remind everyone that we have three minutes for public comment. I'll have the timer here, may or may not sound off when the timer ends, but I'll let you know when the time is up, and so we'll start off with Clay Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor and city council members. My name's Clay Williams, and I live at five ninety-six Browns Church Road in Jackson. I'm here to comment on behalf of the Browns Church Road, Cotton Grove Road, Cobb Road, and surrounding area residents regarding the proposed city annexation and zoning changes for the agenda item referred to as Ross number two. We have several members of our community here, and I would like to ask them to stand as I begin to read this prepared statement. Approximately fifty to sixty community members met at the F O P Lodge on the evening of February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. I have a sign-in sheet listing the names and addresses of some of those community members who attended the meeting. This list can be made available to the developer, city council, mayor, and city planning if so desired. The purpose our meeting was to allow community members to voice their concerns about this annexation and rezoning request, and come to the city, city council meeting as a mostly united front to explain our concerns. I was also asked to speak to the council on behalf of the, on behalf of the community at the end of our meeting. We understand that the property owner wants to develop high-end warehousing that will abut Browns Church Road, as well as some of our adjacent residential property owners. These large warehouse buildings would be visible, might be visible to residents along Browns Church Road near Cobb Road, as well as the rest of our community during routine travel to and from our homes each day. Although we did have several community members adamantly opposed to this annexation and rezoning at the beginning of our meeting, we did, we did lead the meeting as a mostly united front. We as a community are choosing not to oppose this development, as we know that progress is important to our city. Rather, we would like to take an alternate approach and ask the developer and city planning to work with us to address our concerns and help to, to maintain our chosen rural way of life and keep it intact. Some, but certainly not all of the concerns that were expressed, expressed at the meeting are as follows. Number one, truck access from Browns Church Road. Number two, truck traffic on Highway seventy and four twelve that is already heavily congested. Number three, noise from the trailer drops as well as the truck traffic in the development. Number four, the possibility of hazardous materials that might be stored. Number five, destruction of trees and how that affects our local wildlife. Number six, our property values. Number seven, the current beautiful view of the property along Browns Church Road that could be replaced by views of new warehouses. The fact that in, number eight, the fact that an I two zoning also allows for light industrial facilities. Our community is asking for the following considerations from the property developer and city planning. Number one, leave the trees along Browns Church Road and next to adjacent property owners within a certain buffer zone, a distance to be determined by all, and plant new trees in the proposed buffer zone where needed. This request would be to protect our community from seeing new buildings where we are currently, where we currently view woods and open fields beyond. Number two, create an earthen berm behind the tree buffer zone along Browns Church Road, as well as next to adjacent property owners as necessary. This item would be to minimize twenty-four-seven trailer and truck noise, as well as nightly site lighting. Number three, do not allow access from Browns Church Road. On a closing note, we have members of our community who have lived here for the entire, entire life, and luckily even multiple generations of life. Cotton Grove, as it was called, was one of the first settlements in Madison County, Tennessee, along with Beach Bluff and Bemis, and was established in eighteen nineteen. We chose this rural way of life and live the city life and do not want that to change. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of our community. I pray that these concerns can be addressed in a manner that also allows our city's great progress to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and if, if the city council and planning would like, I can, I can also email this prepared statement that addresses our concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Would you please email it, sir?
Yes, please.
All right, next up we have James Thomason.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
I'm James Thomason. I live on Highway four twelve east, right across from the Ross property that was previously inducted into the city, I guess is the right word, and was subsequently clear cut without any, hardly any trees at all being left. And so I am opposed to this rezoning. I'm opposed to it because of the devaluation of property values, which I have experienced personally already, and that I've lost the sale of a property because of this rezoning being made public. I'm opposed to it because of the, uh, because of the way it has impacted my way of life and other, already impacted my way of life by having the property across from my, my property clear cut and denuded of all trees. I, the developer has not shown that he's followed the city's guidelines of leaving existing greenery around his property, so I don't think he, in my opinion, does not have a good record. While I understand that the city believes that this is a win-win for them and for John Ross, I agree that it would be. It's not a win-win for all the property owners around it. I specifically have been impacted in a negative way as far as other development around that area. In addition to the concern, these are concerns I have in addition to the concerns that Clay has already presented to the council. And I would propose that the city delay incorporating this into the city. I'm not saying that they should not, but to delay it until the developer proves that he can develop the property in a way that doesn't affect the community by developing the property he already has owned and approved for those purposes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up we have David and Diane Hoover, House, five hundred Browns Church Road. Can't read her last name, I'm sorry.
That's me, I didn't know I was supposed to speak.
Well, you gotta come on up if you want to speak. Were y'all just signing in to say you were here?
Yes, I think I told him, I said, you better sign in.
If you don't want to speak, you don't have to.
Oh, it don't matter.
Okay, all right.
I just support what Clay said.
That's what you get for listening to Councilmember Wallace.
Listen to me.
I, I support what Clay did. I mean, to be honest, this is right across the street from where I live. Five hundred Browns Church Road, that property is just about butts right up against where I live, and I agree, you know, I'm, it's, I've been there thirty years now, and really two different houses, and so next to each other, so, you know, it's always been sort of laid back, and when I go to the mailbox, I can hear the traffic coming. So I just, you know, I just like it, and the animals and the deer, just like he said, and it just concerns me, you know, the word is urban sprawl, I think they call it. The city keeps growing and sort of, and, you know, I've had that one, I've retired, but I have opportunity to work out of state years ago, and I've witnessed how factories just sort of show up, and you'll see one house between two or three factories where they sort of get pushed out, and so I'm sort of concerned a little bit about that, and I know the city's got to grow, but you know, there's got to be a balance, so thank you for letting me speak.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, if, if, if you were told to sign in and you don't want to speak, that's okay.
I'm equal opportunity, you know.
Connie Doughty? Would you like to speak, or were you told to sign in too?
I only did it to him.
Just signed in, okay. Uh, can't read the first name, Doughty, were you also told to sign in too? Okay, all right, now here. Sheila Young? Just signing in, okay?
I only told one person if they wanted to.
My goodness. Dean Garner? Okay, I just want, I just want to give everybody an opportunity if they signed in, just want to go through the list, and because the last thing I want to do is somebody signing in, I didn't call their name. Dean Garner? Dean Garner? Just signing in, okay? And then David McCrary? You want to speak? Yes, sir. Come on up.
The idea has already been presented about having trees grown along, leaving an area along Browns Church Road where trees, more trees could be grown that would provide this buffer zone that we're thinking about. I think it has already been proposed from someone that that be about a three-hundred-foot area. I think it would be very good for everybody concerned, for, for us as residents and for the, the company who's, who's going to be building a lot of buildings. As they're building these buildings, they're going to be... As they're building these buildings, they're gonna be cutting a lot of trees. What we've seen, uh, in the maps that are, are showing where their buildings are gonna be, it'll, it'll be virtually wiping out many acres. Out of the three hundred and thirteen or so acres, there's a lot of acreage of trees that will be gone. All of us know how important these trees are. So if we, what we're proposing is approximately three hundred feet of, of, along, all the way down, up and down Brown's Church Road, that, uh, trees are grown. And, uh, that will, that will help both us, uh, as residents, and it will also help, uh, as far as the, the, uh, environment is concerned for the whole project, because we'll be able to have a solid line of trees that's about three hundred feet deep, and we can put in that line along Brown's Church Road. We can add in some Bradford pears, we can add in some, some honeysuckle and things like that that will block the view, and you don't need a berm. Uh, if you have three hundred or so feet of trees growing, uh, that will provide, uh, everything from noise, uh, control to smell, control to, you name it. Trees will really make a difference. So I would hope that, as this thing is being done, that you will encourage or somehow work out a way of, of assuring us that whatever the boundary should be, that it be put in the, in your part of what you do to, to make this happen. Thank you so very much for considering us and allowing us to be here and, and to express ourselves. Uh, we are very concerned that the community that we're in is a beautiful community in terms of, uh, the relationships that all of the people have. We feel very safe, we feel very, uh, happy to, uh, with our neighbors, and we love getting together, and we appreciate you guys very much for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCrary. All right, that concludes our public comment section. Thank you all for participating, and move on to first reading. Item one is a proposed budget amendment, JPD Professional Services, the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Good morning. Funding for this proposed amendment would come from our, uh, fund balance, and this will allow the police department to continue the contract that they have with their central records management system, which is a critical piece of what they do there. And, uh, this will address some budget confusion that we had in preparing the FY twenty four budget, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. A motion and second, any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item two is proposed budget amendment, JPD federal, federal equitable sharing expense, the amount of forty thousand dollars.
So over time, uh, our police department, where they assist certain federal law enforcement agencies to receive reimbursement for that, and have accumulated some reserve funds, they're kind of restricted for police use, and the police department's making this request to draw down some of those reserve funds to.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item three, proposed budget amendment, capital outlay fund, public safety complex, the amount of sixteen thousand dollars.
Uh, this would be funded from, uh, the capital outlay fund balance, just as the original. I think it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to kind of start the preliminary, uh, design development, kind of see where the building might be placed at some point in the future. And, uh, originally, the survey work, which is what this money would be used for, was originally planned in the next phase of the development, however, in terms of making the best decision because of some utility concerns and other things, uh, to make the best decision about where the potential building may possibly be located, it makes sense to go on and do the survey now, so.
Motion. Second. Motion, seconds. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item four, proposed budget amendment, capital outlay fund, the Ned Fire Alarm Control Panel, the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bobby. Item five? Is that an important item? No. Consideration of a plan of service, proposed annexation and zoning for an area referred to as Ross Number Two, submitted by John Ross, comprised of two hundred and eighty-five point six nine acres, more or less, located at Highway seventy east of Brown's Church Road. Proposed zoning is I two light industrial district.
Mayor, I need to abstain from this. I represent property on that.
All right.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Um, this item was presented to the planning commissioner, and they are recommending the annexation, the plan of service, and also the zoning for the area upon its annexation. I've heard the public comments this morning, and I just wanna give you some information, um, concerning the annexation and the property. Uh, Marcus, if you can help me with the overhead. Well, that's good. All right. All right, so this is a, a plat of the property, and I, the only reason I'm putting it up there is to show you, um, the original request that you received, um, basically included all of the property, and that was, uh, there is the, the boundary of the property here that, that goes down and touches Brown Church Road. That was the original request, uh, that the, the property owner asked. And again, remember, annexation is not something we initiate, uh, it is requested, and we can only process those annexations that are requested, and they requested, and their original request was that we annex the, their entire property. Uh, but since then, given some of the concerns that, uh, the neighbors had in the area, they have backed off that request to where you see the red line, which is this line here. Uh, and that as a minimum is about three hundred feet, but in some places, it's wider than that. So they have backed off their annexation request, uh, to only include the area to the red line. In other words, the area that is, uh, the rest of their property that would bound, uh, Brown's Church will be left unannexed.
Mr. Stan, what, um, what district would that be? Do you?
It's probably gonna be.
District four. So it'd be, okay.
Mr. Chairman, while we're paused, I do have a question. Um, sir, I only caught your first name, John, yes, sir. Clay, okay. Are you all aware of this? Well, I don't know. I'll have to, Mr. Mayor.
This is not a time to address the, the audience. This is, we address the, the person presenting the, the agenda item, we don't address the audience.
Stan, are the, um, is the people, the residents aware of what's been the change?
Well, they, this is in response to some of their concerns out there, and, and again, the original request took it all the way to Brown's Church, because again, that was the property that the, that the property owner owned, but he has backed that off, so this quest that you have before you only involves to the red line, because again, because it's requested, he requests what he wants to be annexed. So we're, we don't, we don't say, this is what you have to annex. He's chose to, uh, to, on his behalf, to back it off. So only, he's only requesting annexation now to the red line.
Stan, do you know how many acres this is versus the original two hundred and eighty-five point six nine?
I don't know that right offhand, um, but again.
It's three hundred feet back, right?
Yes, it is. At a minimum, and then it gets wider at some places.
Mr. Chairman. Stan, so the other thing I'd like to clarify, so with this being backed off, at no point, though, was there gonna be any, uh, traffic access to the park from Brown's Church, is that correct?
No, sir.
Okay, and as far as the concerns regarding noise and, uh, you know, environmental impact, can you speak to that, please?
Well, let me go to, to, um, this map here. All right, the, the area that we're talking about, let me first clarify that this has already zoned I two in the county. So when we annex property or requested annexations that come through, we reflect whatever zoning is in, in place in the area, and that's what we carry that class. So in other words, it has a county class of I two now. It would carry an I two class in the city, 'cause as part of annexation, we have to convert the zoning class that's in the county to whatever the city class is gonna be in the city. So, so the majority of this property, uh, is already zoned I two. Uh, the only portion that is included that's not, is the, see the red line here? That's the I two line, which represents the bulk of the property. And then this portion between the red line and the yellow line, which is the backed off line that you saw on the other map, is the only portion that's FAR. Now, on the land use plan for this area, it all, it shows all this area is appropriate for industrial. Um, the thing also, um, that the residents need to know is, in the city, there is a vegetative impact evaluation process. In other words, we look at, uh, what they are gonna be cutting, and the city does not have, uh, has a prohibition against clear cutting, but we don't have a prohibition between taking trees down, because to develop property, to grade property, to establish buildings, there's gonna be trees that get left, you know, have to leave because of, uh, to accommodate the development. The county doesn't have that process. So in other words, out in the county, if this property was developed in the county, uh, there would be no prohibition from clear cutting the whole property. So this property coming in the city will be more protected than it would be in the county. The other things associated with it is, um, you know, the, in the city, we also have, um, a, a more rigorous review in terms of the buffering and things that go into place when we review site plans. So, so we will apply those standards when we go forward. Uh, we will, uh, look at where the, uh, development interfaces, other, you, land uses, and I'll just show you, um, this map here, uh, and see if I can get it out. All right, it's, it's being finicky. All right, so, um, again, you see the red line at the bottom of the map, that's toward Brown's Church, and you see the buildings there. Now, again, this is a concept plan. Um, it, it will, as the property develops, it will develop based on whatever development pattern they go forward with, but this is a concept, and as you can see, the buffer is, is in place, and you can also see that there is, uh, some buffering that is between the buildings and that red line. So there's further buffering that's there, and so we will take all that into play when we review the, the site plan for, for rezoning. So again, in terms of the annexation, uh, the, the property owner has requested, the property owner has, has chosen on his own behalf to back this off, uh, and we would, you know, we're not looking at any access to Brown's Church. Uh, we're gonna look at the vegetative impact evaluation when they go forward, seeing what trees can remain and what trees are gonna go. Um, any trees that we can save, of course, around the edges, we will, uh, try to save those so that we can get that nat- natural vegetation. But, but again, we will review that as it goes through the site plan process. And, and also, just as a way of history, this is an area that's been devoted to industrial uses for a long time. If you remember E.L. Morgan, uh, that property has been out there for a long, long time, and it's been devoted to industrial uses. So the industrial zoning that's in place there just represents, uh, the land use pattern that was established some time ago in the county. And also in the city, we just reflect what that pattern is, is gonna be in the city. So, uh, but I just wanted to show you this. Um, what the petitioners are planning on doing is a really nice, what they call Class A industrial park. This is a tilted up concrete walls, this is not metal buildings and, uh, you know, that you don't sometimes get with industrial development. This is gonna be something nice, uh, that they want to attract, uh, good clients, uh, to use and to, to, uh, carry out business. So in all these aspects, you know, again, the planning commissioner has recommended to you, because again, it's requested, uh, it matches the land use pattern that's already been established in the county, and, uh, we feel like that the development will be a positive for the area. Now, again, I just wanna be clear, 'cause I think this is important, that, that this area is already zoned industrial. Uh, if the annexation didn't go through, they could develop the property industrial now.
So, so Stan, let's, Councilman Lawrence has a question, and then I got a question also. Councilman Lawrence.
Okay, uh, right now, you say, is there not some farmland that's gonna be rezoned here? There is a portion of the property. Roughly how many acres or how many, what percent? I don't know the exact acreage, but again, that area, but, uh, that area that we're talking about was shown as appropriate for industrial, it's just not zoned industrial now. So it's, it's zoned industrial now by the county? It is, the majority of the property is. Why do, what's the reason for an, an annexation? What's, what's the benefits here? Utility. Mayor slipped me that question out. It's a, it's a utility provision issue. Uh, I mean, uh, sewer, sewer service follows, uh, the city limits, so basically, they're asking to be brought into city so they can have a full complement of, and utilities available to the site. Is the utilities, like in a, a residential area, it has to be paid for by the company, and then the city take it over later, so there's not any cost to it? Well, JEA, uh, they, they put whatever utilities are, uh, required within the development, and then JEA will take, uh, over the maintenance of those. Okay, so, so this could not be accomplished by the county, JA wouldn't do it for them. Sewer service is a city service. Okay, sewer service.
And, uh, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I have a question. It, this is something, uh, I would clarify, that the property owner, the person who owns this property is, they're, they're requesting that.
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
So, okay, okay, if this, if it was, was annexed and all, what guarantee would the citizens have that this buffer zone would be planted with trees and what all? Well, again, we, we have two processes that, that will be used to make sure that those things are put in place. One is, before they ever develop, there's a vegetative impact evaluation that we require the developer to do, and they'll look at the existing vegetation and where they can save existing vegetation, uh, along the edges, uh, for buffering, uh, then we'll ask them to do that. Uh, they can also beef it up, uh, we'll look at the individual, the other processes, we'll look at the individual sites as they develop, because again, um, we have a concept plan now, but, but again, they, they're just starting, so they don't know who will come along, who, who will want what properties. Uh, somebody could come in there and decide they want all of it, if they, you know. But, but again, we will review the sites as it comes through the building permit process, and we'll make sure that buffering's in place.
Buffer on lower Brown's, is that what you're talking about?
Right, yeah, three hundred feet. Well, that area, uh, the three hundred feet is gonna remain in the county. Uh, so it's not gonna come into the city, and it will stay FAR just like it is now. So it won't even be zoned industrial, so it can't be used industrially. But the county could rezonate. The county could rezonate. But, but, but again, to, to rezone it would, it's their property. The property owner that's asking for the annexation, it's their property. They would have to petition the county, and they, they have not asked to bring that into the city or to, to zone it industrial, so they wouldn't ask for zoning in the county to, to use it industrial. Right now, I understand, but there, there, is there any way that this could be tied up in a legal form where that area could not be used anything but buffer? Well, again, zoning is the legislative body's responsibility and, and authority. So if the county wanted to zone, I guess they could, but, but again, the property owner would have to ask for that, and the property owner, if he wanted industrial on that strip of property, he'd be asking that the whole property be annexed right now, which, which was the original request, but by his own initiative, he's backed that off to give a buffer because of the concerns that he heard from some of the people out there. This is getting off the wall, forgive me, but is any way that the owner, current owner, could write a contract with the, the residents around saying that he pledges never to do this?
No, of his own properties.
Well, again, those are things beyond, beyond our process, but again, if it's not, if it's not zoned industrial, it can't be used industrially. If it, if it's not in the city, then our jurisdiction that comes to what happens in the city is limited to what's in the city, so.
Your question? Yeah, I, I do, I have, have one. Mr. Powell, I, I, generally on matters like this, I'm always very sympathetic to the people that live out there, because I think people have a right to the free enjoyment of their property. But I wanna make sure that I got this correct. Uh, we are just being asked today just to annex the property only.
Well, no, the annexation has three components. One is the request to annex, which is the property, bring it into the city. Two is the plan of service, which addresses the utility provisions and zoning and, and the things, and when those services will be delivered and how they'll be delivered. the things, and when those services will be delivered and how they'll be delivered. The third option is, any property that becomes part of the city has to carry a zoning class. So, the zoning class that we're carrying from the county to the city is I two because the majority of the property is already zoned I two in the county.
All right. Now, from what I hear, the citizens speak about, the spokesperson for the citizens, he talked about trees, a berm, and no access from Brown's Creek or Chapel?
Brown's Church.
Brown's Church, neither one. Brown's Church Road. And I think I've already heard you say that there will be no access from Brown's Church Road. So, that's taken care of, eliminated. Insofar as the trees and the berm are concerned, that would be involving the site plan, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And, insofar as the site plan is concerned, that your office, you know, takes care of, would citizens have any involvement in that at all about the site? None at all?
No, those, those are permitted, you know, activities, so we review them as a part of the permit.
Okay.
For construction, and, but we will review that.
All right. And in regard to the site plan, when you, when it's developed or whatever, were you taking into consideration what the citizens have asked for about the berm and the trees?
Yes, sir, I mean, that, that discourse has gone forward in a public hearing, and so we're aware of it, and we will, we will review those site plans as they come in in terms of what's reasonable and what's an adequate screen for the properties that are residential that they may have bought.
Okay.
Councilmember Wallace, you have a question?
Yes, sir. I'd like to start by just saying why I want to make a motion, but I feel like the gentleman earlier did state, I'm not.
Are you making a motion?
I'm going to make a motion. I'd like to make the motion that the planning department meets with an appointed representative from that community to have a better understanding and clarification, or even a compromise, to hold down the noise and the pollution.
I can second it.
I think they should, excuse me, I am going to clarify, I think they need the right to understand what compromises, compromises have been made. So, I would like to make that motion, that they at least have one month to meet with the planning department to understand those changes.
So, the item on the agenda is, is for the consideration of the annexation. Are you making a motion to table this?
Table, yes, sir. I'd like to table this until they can meet with the planning department, let a representative to better understand what changes have been made.
Mr. Chairman?
Do we have a motion on the table? Is, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion on the table to table this item, and let me, let me reiterate so I understand it. Motion on the table to, to table the item with the planning department meeting with representatives from the community?
Yes, sir.
To discuss what concessions have been made on the property? Okay. Now, discussion on the, on the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remind council that such a move sets a precedent that undermines the efforts and impact of our planning committee that already voted this through as a recommendation for us to approve.
All right, any further discussion?
Stan, Mayor.
Yes.
Have their concerns been addressed with, with this berm, or not the berm, but the three hundred foot line? Are there other things that are not addressed?
Well, the no access to Brown's Church has been addressed, the buffer zone is now in place, which means the property, the industrial use of that property will be backed off of Brown's Church. All other things, to me, are within the realm of what's already zoned. I mean, it, the, the property is already zoned industrial, so some of the things they're talking about it, and I, and I, and not trying to draw a, a, a bad and good between county and city, it's just different processes. And in the city, this will be more reviewed, and, and we've got other things in place that we can apply. In the county, these, these things would not be even a part of the discussion. So, so, I think in this case, we're, we're doing all that we can do in, with the processes we have before us to make sure the development is what it is, and, and there's adequate buffering. But, you know, if somebody doesn't want it to develop at all, that's, that's not going to happen because the property is already zoned industrial and would have developed anyway. So, so again, I don't know how else to answer your question.
Stan, if we table it thirty days, is that going to cause a severe problem? Or was it going to cause a problem?
Well, it, you know, you would have to ask the property owner, and I'm sure that they're here, a representative, but, but again, for us, I mean, that's up to you as a body, but, but I'm not sure what the timetables are for, for the property owner and what this does to their timetables.
Well, I like this discussion. I think this is, excuse me, a great way that this county or this city has worked together. We got a developer, and we've got citizens, instead of fighting each other, they're talking about how can we get together and solve this? So, we don't want to make it really difficult on the developer, but at thirty days would not hurt much. That would definitely give time to clear the air. But, so, maybe the, is the developer here would like to comment?
I'd like to say something. What, at what point did the property owner, when did they make the decision to scale back? How long ago was that? Because I don't think it's appropriate if some residents here didn't know about that. I mean, there's, it doesn't seem like there's transparency.
Well, in this case, I think they do know about it because they're here.
Well, now they do, but they didn't know.
Well, they got public notice of this meeting. So, things can always be adjusted when it comes before you. As you know, with that zonings, sometimes the zoning classes can change once they get to you. Sometimes they're recommended, sometimes they're not approved. Things change, but they got their public notices to be here because this matter was being put before you. So, so they, they, they're here if they wanted to be here, they've heard that, that the request has changed. Now, again, talking with them or a month, I understand what, what's being requested. I'm just trying, as a staff, to know what I'm going to bring to the table to talk about that hasn't been presented here today, that they already know.
I'll, I'll, would like to make a statement. I always just feel like it's in the best interest of the city to understand what the residents are thinking. The gentleman that came up earlier said they were willing to have a compromise, they knew that it couldn't be stopped. I still don't have a clear understanding to allow me to vote if these residents understood the changes that were made. That's my point.
And I'm kind of like what Richard was talking about. There seems to be four or five things, some have been met, but there may be some other things that, that they want to be addressed and may not be able to be changed, but.
They're just, there, some of those issues are, are beyond our ability, you know. Again, they're asking the property owner.
Yeah, I think just, I think it's important, Stan, before we go down, before the council votes on this motion to table, can we lay out the facts of the, of the property, of what's being asked on the original agenda item, what the facts are, and we can separate that of what the feelings are?
Okay. And, if, if possible, can I have a representative from, for the property owner to, to come forward?
You got a representative of the property owner here?
Because, because some of these things that they're asking for are, are beyond our ability to regulate and, and, and to handle. So, so the property owner has to.
Phil Bernadette.
Has to speak to those things. But, but again, no access to Brown's Church, that's clear. We would not take industrial roads into residential areas. Zoning of the property for industrial use, now that the property owner has backed off the, off the Brown's Church, that property that's beyond that, that buffer, you know, that would front Brown's Church is not going to be zoned. It's not even going to be a part of the city, so it will stay just like it is FAR. The site plans, the vegetative impact, those are things within our power. If the property is a part of the city, we can do when, when it comes through the process of reviewing the development plans. Now, when you start getting into berms and things of that nature, we had the ability to review buffering and look at buffering options, but there's various ways to accomplish buffering, and, you know, those would be things that I, that I can't address because I'm not, again, my, the, the regulatory basis that I have just looks for a reasonable buffer, and we'll make sure that happens. But whether it's a berm and how tall that berm is and all those things, that really becomes a part of the property owner, because more than likely, what they want would be, may not be, be, may be on the property that's not being annexed, and, and to get the, to get a buffer. So, again, we're willing to do the things we do to ensure that the development can coexist with the uses that are out there. But, but again, I want the property owner here so they could speak, because a lot of these things are, are bearing on them.
Identify yourself with a record, and then, I guess, address any unresolved issues that our council.
My name is Brad Anderson, and I'm a engineering project manager with H and M Company here in Jackson, Tennessee. And thank you, Mayor and, and council, and, and everyone here for allowing me to make a comment. But we do underst- understand the concerns, we appreciate the comments that we've heard today, and I'm here to represent the owner and the developer. And just to let you know, everyone involved in this project, from the owner and developer side, are residents of this area and are citizens of this area, and are concerned about our community just as, as each one of you are, and, and we hear your comments, we do. And as Stan mentioned, when he brought this to us last week, the concerns that we were hearing, we did amend the plan, the original plan, and we backed off the, the three hundred feet that Stan has shown. And we plan not to develop that area, as, as Stan has mentioned, that would not be rezoned to industrial, so we wouldn't plan on developing that area. We plan to leave that area, the owner does plan to leave it as vegetated, not disturb any of the trees there. And there are some areas along that three hundred foot buffer that are currently basically open pasture. If necessary, we can plant trees in those areas as well. We want to be a good neighbor. We want to, we are living this community, and we want to, we want to be a good neighbor in this community. As Stan mentioned, you know, we are not going to access Brown's Church Road. All of our access is coming from Highway seventy. We do have one access for one building on four twelve, but all of the other buildings will be, be coming from Highway seventy. If, if necessary, a berm would not be a, a large ask for us, we would be willing to do that too, if that's what the neighbors would like to do. To address your concern about thirty days, yes, it would affect us. We do, we do need to move ahead, if, if possible, if allowed to. We do have some clients that are looking at the, at some sites now that, that a thirty day delay may affect that. So, however, we, however, we could make that work, that's not, that's not a, a non-issue for us. But, we're willing to work with the community and the neighbors, so whatever it takes to make them, them happy, and we're willing to, to do that through Stan and his group.
May we allow Mr. Williams to make a, ask a question?
I think I can leave you.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
We certainly, you didn't hear our, our request where we came here today asking for a thirty day delay. We did not ask for that, that's not, what was not our purpose here, okay? So, I wanted to make that clear from our perspective. Things we have asked for are, number one, the plan that we got, and then we received initially was showing what's now that's FAR, is being zoned and changed to I two, okay? Sometime last week, that request changed internally. We heard a rumor that that had happened, but I, I requested a plan from H and M, it was not Mr. Brad, it was somebody else at H and M. I requested that new plan, I didn't get it, he was probably just busy, no fault there. But I hadn't laid my eyes on this plan, this is the first I've seen of it today. I know this property, and if I'm, I'll ask Stan a question, is the red line that's on the set, or on the bottom side of what's now I two, that is on the top side of what's now FAR, and that, that zoning line is not changing? All you're doing is saying you're not gonna, you're not requesting to take the F, FAR into the city and not trying to rezonate to I two?
Let me just show, there, the portion that you see that's south, or, I don't know the direction, but anyway, pointing to the bottom of the map, it's, it's, the red line represents the extent of the annexation and where we will zone to I two when it comes in the city.
Is that the current I two line or no?
There is. Here, you can see that there is an area between the yellow line, which is the extent we just saw on the other map. And the red line represents where the I two comes now. So, there is a portion that is currently zoned FAR that would become I two in the city, but it does not include the property that we had.
I understand.
Here.
Thank you.
And I will say that, that on our land use plan, and I haven't put that up there, but where the extent of that plan shows, it basically had that line coming farther down, and the only reason it blocks off is because that's where the plan stopped. But you can see that it already showed a portion of that property already appropriate for industrial, and that's what we would use to, to recommend, and that's what we use to recommend to the council in terms of zoning, is what's appropriate based on the land use plan. So, so again, i- is there a portion of FAR that will be zoned I two? Yes, the part, the portion that I showed on this map here, between the red line and the yellow line. But the rest of it won't come into the city and won't change.
So, we're going to have, if I understand correctly, approximately three hundred feet, approximately from Brown's Church, that's going to remain FAR and not be annexed into the city all along.
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. We did not know this until today, I certainly at this point cannot speak for, for everybody else, but from my standpoint, I'm, I'm satisfied that they're willing to work with us because they've already taken this step, and I think we wouldn't have probably asked for any more than that. I think it's a great concession, and I'm personally okay with that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to take back my motion then, and rephrase, please.
Now, if there are other residents, I don't know what the speaking order is, like I said, I can't speak for everybody, but they haven't allowed me to speak for them until now.
There's no more speaking order.
And I will say, and I will say on the, on the concept plan that, that the area, and again, this is a concept, they made it clear that things could change, but as you can see, they're adding additional buffering even above the red line. They're providing, and, and according to the dimensions, it's about another two hundred or so feet.
It's just we hadn't seen that until today, so, I mean, that's, that's a big deal.
It is a big deal.
And, and I'll say that, that the reason that it changed is because I expressed the concerns that, that I, that I was hearing to the property owner, and they were immediately responsive. They, they got me the legal descriptions, they got me the revised plans, they got them to me as quickly as they could possibly get them to me, within a day turnaround, so that this could, could be presented at this meeting and these concerns could be alleviated.
This is scary because this is the way government should work.
Exactly.
I'm, I'm going to, to vote for this.
She's, she's rescinding her motion, so.
Okay, so we're back on the.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move as presented.
Second?
Motion is second as presented. All right, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say thank you for allowing this discussion, and I know what you're going to say to me later, but I do appreciate it. It does, the residents do have the right to be heard and to be understood, and it makes me feel much better that the gentleman said we didn't get this till today. So, thank you for that, and thank you for your patience with me.
All right, motion, second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion, motion passed seven to one of Stan.
All right. Item six, consideration for an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of.
So moved.
On Corium Street.
Second.
And motion is second, any further discussion?
Second reading also moved.
Council, please vote.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
We've got a second reading. Item one, proposed budget amendment to capital outlay fund, favoring equipment, amount of forty eight, four hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
So moved.
A motion?
Yep.
A motion.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item two, proposed budget amendment to transfer ARPA funds to capital outlay funds, purchase street department truck in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion is second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item three, proposed budget amendment, general fund roof repair for the library in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item four, proposed budget amendment to transfer JPD insurance recovery funds from general fund to capital outlay fund in the amount of fifty-three thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item five, proposed budget amendment to transfer budgeted ARPA funds to general fund for Love Your Block in the amount of sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item six.
No, no, that, that motion didn't pass.
Motion passed seven to one.
Okay, item six, proposed budget amendment, general fund, ECD childcare grant, the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to one.
All right, we get to new business, item one's consideration of approval of MOUs with the YMCA and hands up for the ECD childcare grant per, per state regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to one.
Item two's consideration of an inter-local agreement with West Tennessee Recycling Hub.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion, motion passed eight to zero.
Item three's consideration of a contract with A2H for the two thousand twenty-three Tennessee LPRF program project and application.
Second, motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item four's consideration of a contract with Thompson and Smith for an insurance broker for aviation insurance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to briefly thank some previous council members for helping us to streamline this process and save a few dollars.
Yeah, Councilman Pickens did a great job.
Yeah.
Have a motion is second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item five, consideration of a contract with Tennessee Roofing Consultants for roofing consultant work citywide.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item six, consideration of committee and board appointments, keep Jackson beautiful, the appointment of Pastor Ernest Polk, Sherry Franks, Linda Seeley, and A.J. Merriweather.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Ned McQuarner, West Tennessee Cultural Arts Center Board, appointment of Amy Dietrich and Kenneth Hollis.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Jackson Board of Zoning Appeals, reappointment of Mamie Huttristan and Max Hart.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion is second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Jackson Community Redevelopment Agency's nomination for chairman and vice chairman, Chairman Vicky Lake, Vice Chairman Sammy West.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion is second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Have no budget amendments less than ten thousand.
No, that, that wasn't.
Motion passed seven to one, abstain, thank you.
No budget amendments less than ten thousand, item eight's consideration of invoices over ten thousand.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
No further business coming for the council, meeting is adjourned.